Good evening and welcome to the Florida Department of Transportation District Four Public Hearing. Tonight, we will present the Draft Tentative Work Program for projects in Broward, Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River County along with the Florida's Turnpikes Projects in this region program between July 1, 2025, and June 30, 2029. Today is October 18, 2023. My name is Guillermo Caneo, and I am the Communications Manager of the Florida Department of Transportation in District Four. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Florida Statute 339.1354. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the department's draft tentative work program, which addresses the scheduling or programming for funding of the various phases of each project in the upcoming five-year period, and to receive public comments on those schedules. This hearing was advertised in the Florida Administrative Register and posted on the Florida Department of Transportation's website. All right, we're going to go over the rules of engagement. This public hearing is being recorded. If you experience technical difficulties, please contact 1-800-418-0524 so that a member of our technical support team may assist you. All virtual attendees will remain muted throughout the hearing. Virtual attendees are also welcome to submit any questions or comments using the GoToWebinar Control Panel at any time. Questions and comments will be collected and read out loud at the end of the presentation. All in-person attendees are welcome to submit a question or comment by raising your hand during the open discussion, and a team member will pass the microphone to you. If you are participating via telephone and have questions or comments, please feel free to submit them to Stephen C. Braun, E.E., District Secretary, via email after the meeting, and response will be provided. Next slide. Slide 5. It is the policy of the Florida Department of Transportation that no person be denied the benefits of or be subjected to discrimination or retaliation under any program or activity administered by the department or its subrecipients on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, age, disability, handicap, or income status. Slide 6. The District Four Title VI Coordinator is Sharon Sing-Ha Yan from the Title VI Program Office. Her location is 3400 West Commercial Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33309-3421. Her phone number is 954-777-4190, and her email address is capital S-H-A-R-O-N dot capital S-I-N-G-H capital H-A-G-Y-A-N at DOT dot state dot F L dot U S. The statewide Title VI Coordinator is Stefan Kulakowski from the Equal Opportunity Office located in Tallahassee, and his address is 605 Dewan East Street, MS 65, Tallahassee, Florida, 32399-0450, and Stefan's phone number is 850-414-4742. His email address is capital S-T-E-F-A-N dot K-U-L-A-A-O-W-S-K-I at DOT dot state dot F L dot U S. Slide 7. The meeting materials for this hearing, including tonight's presentation, a work program process video, and the entire list of proposed projects for the five-county region can be found on the Florida Department of Transportation website at the address shown on this slide, and that is www.fdot.gov/topics/fdot-work-program/district-four, I apologize, district-four-wp-public-hearing. This hearing is being recorded, and will be posted on this website by Monday, Friday, October 20, 2023. Slide 8. At this time, I am pleased to introduce the District Four Secretary, Stephen C. Braun. Mr. Secretary?
Good evening and welcome, everyone, here in person and online. Thank you for joining us. So, as mentioned, this is a public hearing for the draft tentative work program. So each year, the department, in conjunction with our partners, develops a program of all projects and programs that the department can fund over the next five years. But before we get into the presentation and the hearing, I wanted to really extend my appreciation to the entire District Four team that's involved in developing the program, ranging from project managers and estimators putting project costs together, updating right-of-way estimates, our liaisons and coordinators really working with local municipalities and our NPOs, and the team that's here this evening, very well represented, led by Jessica Rubio, our program management team and work program office. A lot of work goes into this development, this work program. I appreciate all of you for the work you've done. Also here this evening, I wanted to introduce our new Director of Transportation Development, John Crane, and then Paul Lampley's here as well, our Director of Operations. But thank you to the entire district that's been involved in developing the program. Next slide really just shows an overview of District Four. And as you'll see on this slide, the Florida Department of Transportation is way more beyond highways, bridges, and roadways. We play a key role in delivering transportation infrastructure with our modal partners as well. District Four covers Broward, Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River Counties. And with 4.1 million residents and visitors, in addition to that visitors, the key really to developing this work program are our communities. We get a lot of feedback through this process from our metropolitan planning organizations, TPA, TPO as well, and municipalities as we put together funding to program infrastructure. The next slide shows really the center of our focus area has been community, and you'll see in this work program, we'll cover some projects this evening, but also as if you take the opportunity to dig deeper into the program, projects that really cover everything from safety, resiliency, supply chain, use of technology really to optimize our transportation network. Yeah, a key part of delivering this program, which by the way is one of our biggest ever, about a $7 billion program, is the workforce that it's going to take to deliver this program. So that's a big emphasis we're placing here at the department and as a transportation industry as well. Again, the department, in coordination with our partners, we have many priorities. First and foremost, safety for all users, pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, really with the goal of efficiently moving people and goods through the region. As mentioned, we have a range of projects in the program. Next slide shows really the range of projects and the funding commitment reflected in this program. You know, off the top, over 900 million really towards operations and maintenance, and then a also over 900 million in resurfacing, over 800 lane miles on the state highway system based on their pavement condition, which needs to be resurfaced in these coming five years. Again, safety is embedded in all the projects we do, but we do have dedicated funding towards safety standalone projects or special programs as well. And as I mentioned, the modal partners, airports, seaports, transit, over 700 million towards those type of projects. Again, a big range of projects with really the needs that are identified on the entire transportation network often, and we know this all too well over recent years, exceed the funding availability. The team here this evening and the department really tries to balance those needs that are identified with the resources that are available. Again, keep in mind that that balancing act between maintaining what we have, preservation, including the resurfacing program I mentioned, improving safety for all users of the network, and then also trying to address those NPO, TPO priorities as well. Again, one of the challenges of this year with increasing costs of delivering projects from material prices, especially trends in asphalt, steel, and concrete, along with workforce and supply chain challenges in the industry, we have seen cost increases again in what it takes to deliver these projects. So again, that's part of the balancing act in developing this program. And we'll see a presentation or video in a minute that talks about the cycle of the work program development. One of our main goals really in that balance is keeping the program stable, kind of funding the next phase of a project really just to more efficiently deliver those projects over the five years. So that's part of the decision-making process we go through. And as mentioned, coordination, not only with NPOs and TPAs, the transit agencies in each county, the airports, the seaports, and the South Florida Transportation Authority that operates Tri-Rail, we're a funding partner towards those transit initiatives as well. So again, I appreciate everyone being here this evening. I encourage people here in the audience or online to ask questions, look at the material that will be published, and if you have any questions as we finalize this work program, feel free to reach out to the department. Again, thank you for taking the time to participate this evening, and I'll hand back to Billy.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Slide 12. Tonight's agenda will include a presentation that explains the FDOT's work program process, a presentation of projects included in the draft tentative work program. After the presentations, we will open this hearing to receive comments from the public regarding the materials presented here tonight. We will now see a presentation explaining FDOT's work program process. If you are using the GoTo app, you will need to switch views to the video.
With over 22 million people calling Florida home and 137 million more visiting our great state every year, reliable transportation infrastructure is integral to our state's economy, livability, and resiliency. Stable and long-term planning to meet the transportation needs of residents and visitors is the primary responsibility of the Florida Department of Transportation. Florida's multimodal transportation system includes roadways, bridges, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, airports, seaports, spaceports, rail lines, and transit. State and local transportation officials work together to develop plans to develop plans and innovative strategies to improve safety and mobility for all users. These plans are carried out by the five-year work program. The FDOT consists of seven districts and the Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. The work program is developed through these districts, working with local governments, metropolitan planning organizations, other agencies, and the public. The work program contains projects in different stages: planning, project development and environment, design, right-of-way, construction, and maintenance. Through the work program process, the state's transportation priorities are established. After work program public hearings are held in each FDOT district, public comments have been accepted, local governments have endorsed the plan, and the Florida Transportation Commission and state legislators have approved it, the official five-year work program is adopted by the Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation on July first, the first day of the state's fiscal year. As FDOT develops and updates each year's work program with residents and government partners, it is understood that next July first, the current year of the plan is complete and a new fifth year will be added on. The yearly update produces the new tentative five-year work program. The work program assures we have a prioritized program of transportation choices that result in a better quality of life for the residents and visitors to this beautiful state.
Slide fifteen. The District Four work program is stable. FDOT maintains construction and right-of-way estimates on an annual basis. Overall, project costs significantly increased with respect to last year. The goal is to maintain projects that were committed in the common four years related to safety, preservation, and maintenance. New phases were generally programmed in the fifth year. Slide sixteen. For July, October, we prepare the draft tentative work program in coordination with the NPOs, TPAs, and TPOs. We balance the draft tentative work program to allocations received and then present to Broward, Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, Indian River Counties, technical advisory committees, and NPO, TPO, TPA boards. And then we conduct the public hearing on October eighteenth. In November, the final snapshot of the draft tentative work program is completed. In December, FDOT Central Office compiles district plans to create the statewide preliminary tentative work program and submits to the Governor, Legislature, Florida Transportation Commission, and Department of Economic Opportunity. Slide seventeen. In January, the FTC, the Florida Transportation Commission, holds a statewide public hearing on the preliminary tentative work program. The legislature convenes January ninth, 2024, for the early legislative session. And then FDOT Central Office submits the final tentative work program to the Governor and the Legislature. And on July first, as we saw on the video, after the budget is approved by the state legislature and the governor, the five-year work program is adopted by the FDOT State Secretary. Slide eighteen. Working in conjunction with the metropolitan and transportation planning organizations and agencies in the region, the department continues to fund a variety of programs and projects to improve the overall transportation network. This program usually impact multiple travel modes, facilities, and counties. Slide nineteen. We will now highlight projects included in the five-year draft tentative work program for each of the five counties in our district. Slide twenty. The Broward NPO continues to focus on operational improvements, transit projects, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and congestion relief projects throughout the county, along with long-term strategic planning at the NPO level. A variety of these projects are funded in the various phases of PDNE, design, right-of-way, and construction. Slide twenty-one. This map highlights resurfacing projects throughout Broward County. During this five-year work program, District Four has programmed about 371 lane miles with an estimated cost of approximately $221 million. Slide twenty-two. This map highlights other various projects in Broward County. Slide twenty-three. This map highlights all projects in Broward County. Slide twenty-four. Also included in the draft tentative work program is the construction of Southwest 10th Street from the Sawgrass Expressway to I-95. This is a key project in the region. Here's a current map of the project location. The light orange lines includes reconstruction and expansion of I-95 between north of Sample Road and north of Hillsborough Boulevard to accommodate the second northbound-southbound express lane in each direction, as well as system-to-system ramps between I-95 and the Southwest 10th Street Connector. The red depicts the Southwest 10th Street Connector improvements whose limits span from the Florida's Turnpike to just west of Military Trail. The teal highlights six surrounding arterial roadway segments known as the TSMNO Smart Work Zone Project. When complete, the Southwest 10th Street Connector Project will address the present safety and mobility challenge and provide that missing link in the region's limited access highway network. This project is included in the statewide Moving Florida Forward Infrastructure Initiative. Slide twenty-five. This project is designed through a vision that prioritizes your safety, time, and quality of life. The Southwest 10th Street Connector Project will provide residents, commercial, and business traffic with safe, efficient, and reliable transportation options the region has been promised for decades. By separating the major highway traffic from the local residential and commercial business traffic, it will allow freight and commuter traffic and other non-local traffic to bypass the residential areas of the corridor and innovatively improve several major cross-street arterials. This project's innovative design puts the priorities of the local residents as well as the non-local users at the forefront. We understand safety, quality of life, and economic impacts are critical to each of you. Slide twenty-six. The Florida Department of Transportation District Four, in coordination with Broward County, are performing a project development and environment study for the Broward Commuter Rail South along the Florida East Coast Railway from Aventura in Miami-Dade County to the city of Fort Lauderdale between Southwest 15th Street and Southwest 17th in Broward County. Project length is 11.5 miles and $74,250,000 are programmed in fiscal years 25 through 28, which is the state match 25% of the total cost. Slide twenty-seven. The automated people mover circulator for Fort Lauderdale is the initial phase of a three-phase APM development, which could eventually connect the airport to Broward County's Seaport and Convention Center. Working with the Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport, the automated people mover will transport passengers within and between the Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport and Port Everglades with connections to regional transportation modes at the Intermodal Center. The airport people mover would improve the level of services to passengers and relieve traffic congestion on the airport and seaport roadways and at terminal hubs. Slide twenty-eight. This is part of a series of mobility and safety projects. They include transit passenger and bicycle and pedestrian improvements. This project connects adjacent communities to State Road Seven. Slide twenty-nine. The Dania Cut Off Canal Bridge is located along South Florida Rail Corridor in Broward County. The double-tracking bridge runs parallel to the southbound I-95 bridge over the canal. Delivery of this project is in collaboration with the South Florida Regional Transportation Authority and FDOT. Current FDOT funding towards construction is $7 million, starting in fiscal year 2025. Slide thirty. Transportation is not just about moving people. It is also about moving freight and goods throughout the county and the state. The department will assist with funding to Port Everglades. Slide thirty-one. The department will provide funding for major transportation improvements at local airports, including Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport, North Perry Airport, Pompano Beach Air Park. This slide depicts the Fort Lauderdale People Mover Project. Slide thirty-two. Working with the Palm Beach TPA, the department will design and construct several major projects, transportation improvements, within the next five years. Slide thirty-three. This map highlights resurfacing projects in Palm Beach County. The department is resurfacing about 205 miles during the five-year work program for an estimated cost of 198 million. Slide thirty-four. This map highlights other projects in Palm Beach County. Slide thirty-five. This map highlights all projects in Palm Beach County. Slide thirty-six. This is a multimodal corridor study. The study length is 13.5 miles with a cost of $2 million. The study will look at the proof of concept, traffic analysis, and impacts. Slide thirty-seven. The State Road Seven Extension Project will provide connection between Okeechobee Boulevard and North Lake Boulevard for the western areas of Palm Beach County. Project will widen State Road Seven from two to four lanes from Okeechobee Boulevard to Sixtieth Street North and extend State Road Seven North with a four-lane divided roadway from Sixtieth Street North to North Lake Boulevard. Slide thirty-eight. The project involves widening Atlantic Avenue from Turnpike to Cumberland Drive in unincorporated Palm Beach County. Proposed project would widen the existing four-lane roadway to a six-lane roadway with upgraded bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The estimated construction for this project is $34.2 million funded in fiscal year 2029. Slide thirty-nine. Project involves widening Atlantic Avenue from Cumberland Drive to Jog Road in unincorporated Palm Beach County. Project will extend east beyond Jog Road to account for intersection improvements and transitions. Proposed project would widen the existing four-lane roadway to a six-lane roadway with upgraded bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The estimated construction is $24.7 million funded in fiscal year 2029. Slide forty. This project on State Road Eighty was added to the work program based on community feedback. The department continues to invest on safety projects and allocated funds for lighting and guardrail improvements in western Palm Beach County. The guardrail installation project was added during this work program cycle provides shielding for shared-use poles. The estimated construction cost is $2.7 million funded in fiscal year 2027. Slide forty-one. The department will provide funding for the port of Palm Beach. Slide forty-two. The department will provide funding for major transportation improvements at local airports. Slide forty-three. Martin NPO is continuing to partner with the department on a number of project development and environmental studies, feasibility studies, design, and construction projects. Slide forty-four. Both the department and Martin County are focusing on resurfacing to extend the service life of the pavement as well as and signalization, striping, and safety projects in the area which are both on the state highway system and off-the-state-highway system projects. A total of 51.6 miles were added to the resurfacing program in Martin County with an approximate cost of $42 million. Slide forty-five. This map highlights other projects in Martin County. Slide forty-six. This map highlights all projects in Martin County. Slide forty-seven. This project located on State Road Seven, Ten from Southeast 126 Boulevard to Southwest Van Buren Avenue is primarily an east-west rural principal arterial roadway that lies between Okeechobee and Martin Counties. It serves local and interregional traffic and facilitates the movement of people and goods to areas along the east coast and central Florida. This project increases overall safety for roadway users and addresses operational deficiencies. Currently, the roadway along the project is a two-lane, undivided highway. This project widens the roadway to a four-lane divided highway with an unpaved median. Project length is approximately 16 miles with design funding added this program cycle, the current fiscal year 24, and right-of-way phases starting in fiscal year 27. The department will continue to coordinate additional funding to support the construction phases. Slide forty-eight. We will continue to work with Martin County Aviation to improve Withem Field. Slide forty-nine. In St. Lucie County, the department is partnering with the county to widen and work towards future widening a number of local and state roadways along with congestion relief projects in the county. Slide fifty. The department also continues to focus on resurfacing to extend the service life of the pavement. During this work program cycle, we plan to resurface about 101 miles in St. Lucie County with an estimated cost of $79.5 million. Slide fifty-one. Here's a map with other projects. It's important to note that in coordination with the city of Port St. Lucie, the department was able to advance Port St. Lucie Boulevard from Becker Road to P A A R Drive, Par Drive, from fiscal year to fiscal year 26. The estimated cost of this project is $18.6 million. Slide fifty-two. This map highlights all projects in St. Lucie County. Slide fifty-three. Construction of this project is added to the District Four Draft Tentative Work Program as part of the Moving Florida Forward Infrastructure Initiative. The proposed project widens the existing two-lane road to a four-lane divided road and improves safety by adding buffered bike lanes and a shared-use path. This project is being coordinated with the Florida Turnpike Enterprise to construct a new interchange with ramps to and from the south. Funding allocated for this project is $50.4 million in fiscal year 27. Slide fifty-four. Funding has been programmed for improvements at Treasure Coast International Airport as well as funding for the port of Fort Pierce. Slide fifty-five. In Indian River County, the department is also partnering with the county to widen and work towards future widening a number of local and state roadways. Slide fifty-six. The department continues to support resurfacing to extend the service life of the roadway. During this cycle, about 83.7 miles are planned to be resurfaced for a total estimated cost of $53 million. Indian River County. Slide fifty-seven. Here's a map that includes other projects. Slide fifty-eight. This is a map with all projects in Indian River County. Slide fifty-nine. Bridge replacement project is fully funded in the five-year work program. The State Road A1A Sebastian Inlet Bridge over the intercoastal waterway. Project will also resurface A1A leading up to the south side of the bridge. Total estimated construction cost is $96.3 million, and this project is scheduled for construction in fiscal year 26. Slide sixty. Funding has been programmed for continued improvements to both the Vero Beach and Sebastian Airports. Slide sixty-one. That concludes our presentation. We would like to acknowledge James Brown, the NPO liaison with the Florida Turnpike Enterprise, who is with us tonight. He's here to address any questions you may have on turnpike projects. As I mentioned before, virtual attendees are also welcome to submit any questions or comments using the GoToWebinar control panel at any time. Questions and comments will be collected and read out loud at the end of the presentation. All in-person attendees are welcome to submit a question or comment by raising your hand during the open discussion, and a team member will pass the microphone. If you are participating via telephone and have questions or comments, feel free to submit them to Stephen Seabron, P E, District Secretary, via email after the meeting, and a response will be provided. Slide sixty-two. Before we open up to Before we open up to questions or comments, we would like to share with you that Florida Department of Transportation was nominated for the Ashto twenty twenty-three America's Transportation Award. Its nomination recognizes Florida's DOT's achievements during Hurricane Ian's response to restore the Sanibel Causeway. We are very proud of the FDOT's achievement, and we are asking you vote for this twenty twenty-three Ashto America's Transportation Award. You have until November fourteen to cast your vote. You can vote once daily per any and all of your devices. Slide sixty-three. This concludes our presentation today, and now I ask Steve Braun, District Four Secretary, John Crane, PE Director of Transportation Development, and Jessica Rubio, District Program Management Administrator, to come up to the podium to take questions or comments from the public. We will take questions and comments in the order they are received.
Thank you, Billy. Any questions here in the audience?
You can approach the mic.
Hello, hello. So, hi, my name is Max. I live here in Broward County. You're probably going to get a lot of representation from here because we're not only the biggest in population, but also the office happens to be in Broward County. I'm not really sure the structure of this, if I can make like specific comments or requests, but what I really wanted to say is, well, first off, it was a very informative presentation. I know that, you know, if we went through every single project in detail, we'd be here for hours. So I thought it was a very good overview, and I thank you for your time and really good summarization of everything. But I think that FDOT District Four is probably focusing a little bit too much on roadway improvements, roadway construction, and really car-focused infrastructure, and not enough on transit infrastructure. And I know that this might not be the case in some of the more rural suburban counties like Saint Lucy or Martin County, but here in Broward County and in Palm Beach County, first off, we don't have the space to keep expanding our roadways, not without demolishing people's homes and businesses. And the second is that our population is so big and we're so densely living together that if everyone is being forced to drive cars, no one's going to get anywhere in a good amount of time. So we need to start focusing on transit improvements. And I know that there's, you know, the state legislature might have limits on what where you're allowed to move the money and spend it. But I have some requests in particular that I didn't see. For Tri-Rail, I know that FDOT is the biggest supporter of Tri-Rail, and I would like to see that as a vastly improved service, mostly by increasing frequency, buy more train sets so that they can run trains every like fifteen, twenty minutes all day instead of only at peak periods and then hourly frequency off-peak. And working with the cities to get like good TOD built around the stations to increase ridership so that not everyone has to go on the on I ninety-five to get around. And not only so that not everyone has to drive, but so that we save money by not needing to expand I ninety-five anymore. It's very expensive to do that. And that's in addition to finishing the Coastal Link project so that we can actually have like good, not just, I don't want to call it commuter rail service, I want to call it regional rail, because if it's that higher frequency, it becomes kind of like a regional metro system. And to work with Broward County Transit, I'm biased here, but to work with Broward County to get a lot of transit improvements on our strategic intermodal system roadway, so like University Drive, for example, that I know it's state-owned. If you can work with the county to repurpose a lane to like a bus rapid transit lane or a light rail lane. Again, I'm not sure what what limits you have on what mode of travel you're allowed to spend the money on. So you can always like tell me if I'm off-base here. We can't keep expanding these roadways. So we have to use the space that we have much more efficiently, at least here in Broward and like Palm Beach Counties. So if we can literally just take not just university, but a lot of these roadways and just repurpose them for transit-only lanes, that's my big request. And I know that you might not have the budget for that now, but in the future to work with the county transit to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And while this isn't necessarily a question-and-answer session, I will, you know, address some of your points. We do work very closely with the Broward County MPO, as well as Broward County Transit, and all of our modal partners. For your information, Broward County Transit, Broward County is developing something called the Primo Plan, and we are working with them to support that. As that plan develops, we'll certainly be a partner and stakeholder in that as I believe many of the corridors fall along the state highway system. So I think your vision is accurate for Broward and Palm Beach. We do realize we can't keep widening roadways, and we will continue to work with our partners to help make that a reality. And you did see the Broward County South, BCR South, right? That's a major project that's being developed that we are partnering with the county on as well to try and bring that to fruition. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no questions online. If you would like to ask a question online, select the raise hand feature.
Hi. All fine? Okay. Yeah. Hi, Matthew McIntosh, also currently living in Plantation, but I was born and raised in Broward County, grew up in Pompano Beach, Coconna Creek, lived for like five years in Coral Springs and like four or five years in Fort Lauderdale. So I've been around a lot of different parts of the county, but I feel the car infrastructure, it is kind of, it's a barrier to like building the community spirit. Once again, I know you're all very constrained, and I also appreciate the presentation, like how many projects you all had to cover. I think I covered the information very well. But I will say that kind of the car infrastructure doesn't really put kind of the safety of people first. It just puts kind of the safety of motorists first. And it might seem like the same thing just because of how our society has been built up. But I feel like I'd be more excited about like upgrades to a train station versus upgrades to a highway because at a train station, if I stop and look and admire the improvements, I'm not in danger of anybody. But if I was to stop and admire the improvements of the highway, you'll get you'll get at least an accident or a fine at the best-case scenario. So it's, I feel there'll be a lot more appreciation if like for like everything that you all have done if the society was built that way. I don't think it's easy to drive during rush hour traffic, no matter how many highways we have. I think this place would be a lot more filled up if people just walking by the building could see like, oh, that's where our taxpayer money is going towards too. Let me see what's happening there. Can't do that while you're driving. You have to keep your eyes on the road. Can't know anything about what's around you. I know it's a bit more philosophical, but overall, I think Max covered the law at the financial point of views. And I hope you all can at least conserve like opening up the development with the Tri-Rail stations, like maybe some like housing that doesn't come with car parking space. I know it might sound crazy, but you know, with the rise of remote work, not everyone needs a car nowadays, and especially with how kind of roads affect like both heat waves, which are getting worse, and flooding as well, which Broward County just experienced like the earlier part of this year. You know, it's different. Change can be hard, but I think it'll be really appreciated in the long run.
Thank you very much. And again, I'll address a couple of your points. We have a variety of projects in the work program, so I would encourage you to go online on Monday and look through the citizens' plan that you can do a search of that. It's a PDF document. But all of our resurfacing projects, we do coordinate closely with the communities that they pass through. We have a number of communities that are ask us to provide wider sidewalks or fill in gaps on sidewalks, and we're working hard to try and make those connections, make sure that the entire community is connected to the roadway system and the transit system. So I appreciate your comment.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Haviana. I am a lifelong resident of Broward County, living in Hallandale Beach, and I just wanted to echo my friends, Max and Matthew. Share very similar sentiments, would love to see us shifting to investing hundreds of millions of dollars. You know, my generation, our generation are going to be experiencing the ramifications of all these tax dollars and decisions and projects for decades to come. And I would love to live in a Florida, South Florida Broward, where we have alternate modes of transportation, where I can get to work, get to my friend's house, get to the grocery store without having to use my car, or maybe one day not having a car. Would just would love to see us expanding on other modes of transportation, bicyclists, pedestrian safety, those are some really important topics to me. Walkable, livable communities, making sure, you know, we can definitely walk, but it's too hot. We need shade trees, we need, and it would also help with flooding. We need bus stops that are actually covered and protective with all the different types of weather that we have. So there's so many different things I think we could be doing. Definitely, I know a lot of money is being put into our highways and widening of roads. They would love for more of it to be put into sidewalks and livable communities and public transportation and commuter rail. You know, I love visiting other areas like DC and New York and Boston and taking public transportation there, having it be very low-cost or free. Would love to see, you know, one day we have a future in Florida where we can take public transportation like commuter rail to do whatever we need to do and live in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would encourage you all, right now the Broward MPO is developing their twenty-fifty long-range plan. So we, as an agency, take a lot of our direction, most of our direction from our transportation, MPOs, TPOs, and TPAs. They prioritize the projects, and then we work to program. And now would be a great time to at least get your input into that long-range plan. And I would encourage you, you know, as you see our public meetings, public workshops come up for various projects, come out to the meeting, I appreciate you coming out here tonight. But those are, those are opportunities to affect projects that are currently being, you know, constructed to help maybe incorporate some of those ideas. But thank you very much.
We have no questions online. If you would like to make a comment or question, select the raise hand feature or type your comment in the chat.
Hi there. I'm Sarah. I'm also in Broward County. A lot of times when I talk to local officials or FDOT representatives or really anyone who has a hand in projects like this, the sentiment that I get is, yeah, like we're not crazy about building a lot of car infrastructure, but we kind of have to because everyone gets around by car like that right now. And I get it. Like, it's hard, when it really, it's really hard to like bridge that gap from A to B, from like, we are very car-dependent right now to like, how do we make it so that we're not so car-dependent, right? Every time we widen a highway, we are not just spending millions of dollars widening the highway. We're giving ourselves like so much maintenance cost down the line. And that's all stuff that our taxpayer dollars are going to bear. My taxpayer dollars are going to bear for many years to come. I'm pretty young. I'm not crazy about that because I think we need to be focusing on moving people more than moving cars. Most cars only have one person in them. If we focused on transit, sidewalks, bike lanes, they can all move a lot more people than cars do because cars usually have one person. They can seat like six people, but that's not usually the case. So I think in, in like a more broad sense, I would really love to see like longer-term plans that prioritize moving people rather than just moving cars. I recognize you guys' constraints, but I also want to say that we are not going to get to a future that's any different from what we have right now if we keep just doing things the way that we do them right now. That's just not going to happen. So, you know, it's bold, might even sound a little bit radical to be like, oh, you know what? We're actually just going to not do this highway expansion project and reinvest in transit instead. But I really don't think it needs to be that way. And I appreciate you guys coming out here tonight and listening to our comments and for sharing the work that you've done. It looks like you've put a lot of care into it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I would note that there's not a lot of roadway expansion projects in our work program this cycle. So there has been a recognition, I think, in both Broward and Palm Beach County that we won't be widening a lot of roadways. There are some roadways that still need to be widened, there is development. It is, you know, coming in, and we need to service that along with our urban core. And so we are, if you, if you were to download, you know, work programs from the previous ten years to where we are now, I think you will see that this shift towards a more complete street vision is taking place. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate you coming out here. It's great to see you all and make the comments. I appreciate it.
We have no questions online this time.
I'm going to go up script here for a second. Just express my appreciation to the four of you. John said it, but sincerely appreciate you guys coming out tonight, sharing your ideas. I think it's great to get your perspective. We have heard that perspective over recent years. I think there's a lot of people within this organization that understand it. And as John said, over recent years, we've certainly moved towards complete streets, transit. This evening, we tried to cover at least a range of different projects. But we've made a major investment. The one project that came to mind earlier, it's not necessarily one of these mega projects. It's a little bit of a misnomer, State Road Seven Complete Streets Transit. And that project really over was a series of eight or nine different projects improving sidewalks and bicycle lanes from neighborhoods to get to State Road Seven, which is one of the main transit corridors. So it's beyond just that, that actual State Road Seven project transit needs on there. It's getting people, as you kind of alluded to, from the communities to those transit locations. You've probably seen a lot of the express lane projects we've had over the years. An element of those really is to provide express buses, park and ride lots, where we could actually optimize the use of those express lanes with a transit option as well. Again, I appreciate all four of you coming out and commenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Are there any more questions or comments? Hearing none. The Florida Department of Transportation thanks you for participating in tonight's District Four Draft Tentative Work Program Public Hearing for the fiscal years between July one twenty twenty-five and June twenty twenty twenty-nine. Slide sixty-four. After tonight, we will continue to accept comments for ten days by email or US mail and addressed to Mr. Steve Braun at thirty-four hundred West Commercial Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-zero-nine, or S T E V E dot B R A U N at D O T dot state dot F L dot U S. It is now seven twenty three-ish. Presentations have concluded, and there are no further comments from the public. The FDOT District Four Draft Tentative Work Program Public Hearing is now adjourned. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, I thank you for participating and good night.